Ms. Enyard.
Thank you. Please join me for tonight's prayer. My Father, I thank you for the rain that you've provided. I ask for your wisdom and guidance tonight as we make decisions that will benefit this community. And I thank you tonight for my health. In your name I pray, amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on tonight's agenda, can I hear a motion about tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Mr. Calley, Ms. Williams, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments listed tonight?
None for tonight.
All right, thank you. How about approval of tonight's minutes? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve tonight's minutes?
Point of order, it's for the minutes on April 29th, 2024, regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Clarification, approval of the minutes from the April 9th regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Calley, Mr. Pope, thank you. We have no items on old business that will go on tonight's new business. Item number one will be discussion of the Chester Road Town Homes sidewalk. Do we have any representatives here? If you will, for the record, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Cooper Morris with Kimbley Horn, 4031 Aspen Grove Road, Franklin, Tennessee, 37067.
Great, thank you. So, you know, we understand this will not be a voting item, but we're happy to, you know, entertain any comments, general questions that you would like to present to the tonight's commission.
Yes, sir. So, the reason for this is, in the previous discussions in voting meetings, there was a requirement for sidewalks along Chester Road for the development. So, one thing you'll notice, there is floodplain along the edge of the site, including floodway. So, our request is to utilize a pedestrian bridge to span the floodway. That's going to minimize your environmental impacts associated with construction of sidewalk. We still would have a little bit of fill in the floodplain, but overall, the impact to that area will be reduced by using a bridge. So, essentially, we're asking for your feedback because ultimately that's going to become property of Fairview, given it is in the right of way and it's a public sidewalk.
Any comments from the city? Just curious, have you had any additional coordination items that...
I think a question I'd ask the applicant if they brought anything tonight to display or showcase, you know, what it would look like and if there's been any preliminary design, things of that nature.
So, y'all should have an exhibit that we've put together that shows generally the location where it would go, approximate span limits, as well as a representative section. We would anticipate something similar to that from a design element.
Have y'all figured out an elevation yet for the pedestrian bridge?
We haven't yet.
Okay. I took a look at it. Just, I guess, something for you to note, you know, make sure you validate what I discovered. The existing road elevation, I don't remember the exact elevation it was, but I think the 100-year flood elevation would be two feet above the existing road. So, just make sure you, you know, obviously, you have to size that pedestrian bridge for the 100-year storm. Just making sure we get that notated. But other than that, looks like y'all provided sort of a generic example, correct? Okay.
Yeah, we would anticipate working with staff to get to the ultimate final design documents and deliverables.
Yep.
Any comments from the commission?
I have a couple of questions. So, just for, so we're all on the same page. Is, what's the topography of that area for where that bridge would locate? Does it dip down quite a bit? Would there be a significant gap between the bottom of the bridge? Even if you could lay sidewalk there, would it be drastic? I'm just curious of the...
I mean, so we are at the upper limits of the floodway. So, as far as the elevation change, it would be what's out there today. So, there are 30-inch culverts underneath the road that are there. So, I mean, I would estimate it's roughly four feet. We could pull contours and look at that from an elevation perspective, but it's not drastic considering how far up in the floodplain and floodway we are.
And this probably goes without saying, but this would be ramps, right? There's no steps or ledges or anything like that, like ADA accessible, all of that, right?
Correct, yes. Because it's a public sidewalk, this would be 100% ADA compliant.
Thank you.
This is not post-tension concrete, so there will be some I-beams that sits underneath the concrete?
Yeah, it would be a steel prefab bridge that they would go in and set. Really, this is a typical example for what you would most likely do in a lot of situations similar to this on a public sidewalk. But generally, this is all prefabs bridges that are readily available. Obviously, they're custom-made, but generally, it's from a template.
It's not stick-built on-site necessarily. Other thoughts, comments?
One more question I might ask is, what would be the design width of the concrete pavement?
So, we would typically look at it from a sidewalk perspective. So, we're going to match that at the minimum section. So, minimum section on the sidewalk is what the minimum section for the bridge would look at. Of course, we get into design, you know, it could be a little bit wider, but it's not going to be narrower from that element.
Mr. McDonough?
One more, just for the sake of conversation. There is no other options available on this to get around. I mean, is this, it seems like it might be the only thing, but I just wanted, curious, smarter people in the room might have other ideas or...
So, there is one other option, but as far as environmental impacts permitting, ultimately, city staff will be involved. It'll be a strain. You would end up having to modify the floodway, which involves remapping through FEMA. It's a very extensive process, takes a lot of time, a lot of effort from all parties, and it's definitely not the recommended path forward for this instance.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for, just for, yeah, thank you.
Sir.
I just have one quick question. Obviously, this is a bridge that the city's going to own, as you mentioned. Is the developer open to putting up any type of bond or anything for future maintenance or setting aside something that can be set aside for a capital reserve fund? Because this is something that, you know, is a lot more maintenance than a sidewalk.
I would have to have that discussion with the developer and their team on that.
Follow-up on that, part B of his question, is there any data around the maintenance requirements on a bridge like that? Is it more extensive than sidewalks, or is it about par for the course, or...
I mean, we can look through that from the manufacturer's perspective. I would have to look into that. It's not something that I know offhand. But as far as, this is a typical instance. If y'all were to go in as a city to install sidewalks through this section, most likely that this would be the recommended path forward to do that, given the situation that's out there, given the floodplain that's there. This would be the recommended path forward from a sidewalk perspective.
Thank you.
My last question is for engineering. I imagine, is there a city specification requirement regarding bridges? So, there's some technical reliability?
Absolutely. We dug in, could not find anything specific, especially, you know, we looked through the design review manual, zoning ordinance, nothing is really spoken of. And Ethan, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing specific about pedestrian bridges as far as design goes, or it's, if you will, architecture, so.
The, this says standard width. Do we have an idea what the width of the bridge will be?
Preferably, it would be the width of the sidewalk. And that's, I always, I asked the width, because I just want to make sure the city's not adopting a 10-foot or 20-foot wide pedestrian bridge for cost. So, just want to make sure that we were aligned with that.
Sounds good. And the only recommendation would be anything that's wide enough to support a vehicle?
Yeah.
We would want it to be substantial enough that it could support heavier weights or limit the passage of such.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other thoughts, comments on the discussion?
I just have one more, quick one. Since we're, this is just an informal discussion night, and we're not talking, this is more for staff. What are the next steps? Is it just that they bring in a design to you guys? Will that come back to us, or is that something you guys will just approve as a staff? And is it just informational?
Yeah, it's up to you as a planning commission. If you would like for this to come back officially as a voting item, or you could give, you know, nonofficial approval to say that we're okay with this, you know, since we don't have anything in our zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations that can really dictate what they do.
Hence the reason it's a discussion item tonight, to try to pick all of your brains of what you would like to see there.
Yeah, fair enough. And I wasn't indicating I necessarily wanted it to come back. I was just curious. I trust you guys on the design, and I agree that if we were building it ourselves, this would likely be the solution for Fairview if we put the sidewalk there, so.
Thanks.
Okay. Any further comments from the applicant?
No, I think that's it for our team.
All right. Well, then I'll conclude discussion for item number one. We appreciate your time.
Thank y'all. I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. Item number two on tonight's agenda will be an additional discussion on the topic, conceptual plan Highway 96 Town Homes. Do we have a applicant representative for this item? Good evening. If you'll state your name for the record, please, and address.
I'm Trent Smith. I'm an engineer at Southern Consulting. And the project proponent is standing next to me.
Tim Ingram, 7326 Fernville Road, Fairview.
Keith, could you go to the next slide, please?
If you will, would you please state the intent for the discussion, if you have any specific questions, comments that you wanted to present tonight?
The intent that we're hoping to do is to hear any comments from the planning commission, this being just a concept plan at this point in time.
If you will, just spend 60 seconds. Could you give us a synopsis of existing conditions, items that will be presented, any challenges of the project?
Sure. We have, how many, where's the count? So, we're intending at this time to have 90 townhomes, 16 apartments. There'll be, stormwater will be managed through a couple detention ponds. There's some open space. In fact, and this being a concept, actual design would very likely change to some degree. The open space required for this site would be 1.3 acres, tad more than that, and we're currently showing eight and a half. The improved open space required is 67 hundredths of an acre, and we're showing 77 hundredths of an acre. So, in both cases, we exceed the minimums. And, yeah, the site is currently undeveloped and wooded.
Is this the one near Westwood?
This project is between the T-Dot Garage and Lake Road, on the Lake Road side of 96.
If you look at the screen, the line on the west side of that document is Lake Road, and the road on the east side of that document is Highway 96.
We mainly just wanted to submit this to get you guys' feedback, so when it does come back as master development plan, we have more of what you guys are looking for in this, in a more finished product. We'd just love to have your input.
Just for clarification, did you say townhomes and apartments?
Correct. Apartments are shown kind of in the middle grouping, and townhomes are the surrounding.
All rentals, purchase?
No, the apartments will be rentals, but that aspect, the apartment aspect may be removed.
Okay.
But the total unit count will remain the same, is about 105, 106, depending on final layout.
So, when you guys say apartments, is that similar construction to the townhomes, but those would be for rent and the townhomes would be for sale? So, single-story or two-story or whatever?
They're two-story. Currently, the way the apartments are planned, they're two-story, two-bedroom. No garages, where these, the townhomes are showing garages. The townhomes, these are currently showing about 20-foot wide. We see that those may need to be changed to 22 to accommodate some things. The three buildings that front on Highway 96, we anticipate the part of the building that faces 96 to have a front door look, so we're not driving down, looking at people's patios. When you're coming down 96, we prefer that to be the front of the building. So, those would be rear load, and the rest of them would be front load, as far as the garage goes.
Any idea of the amenities that you plan for this community?
No, we haven't, we haven't got that far into this. But we'd love some feedback on that.
I mean, any amenity for a higher-density development, I think definitely improves the quality of that community. Also, any concern with fire truck turnaround at that centerpiece, which I believe you said potentially could be an apartment? That looks like a, not sure that that meets the fire truck turnaround, perhaps? Just something to follow up on. You probably don't have the detail on that tonight.
It's a little early to say, but we intend that the fire truck could pull in, and we have a hammerhead turnaround point at the very rear of the parking.
And if those, if the apartment aspect gets removed, those will be reconfigured to where they're probably sitting on the new road that we're putting in, proposing to put in, opposed to in that parking lot style.
If the apartments went away and townhomes were to take those place, would the overall unit count change at all?
No, we would still anticipate having that 105, 106 as a total unit count.
And this is conventional sewer?
Yes.
Would you consider making, it's this way, would you consider making the apartments condominiums to be paid for?
Well, that's what these other townhomes are...
No, but the apartments, make them condos and not...
No, we're definitely considering that. I said, we may come back with that. We're just, there is such a shortage of market rate rental units in Fairview currently, as we know. So, that was part of the reason for this initial concept showing 16 apartments. They would be built like townhomes, but they would just be retained and not sold.
I just think it's kind of far away from the middle of town to be apartments, per se.
I should probably know this, but I think this was rezoned recently. What is the zoning on this right now?
It's RM8.
RM8, that's what I thought, okay.
Feedback on amenities. This would count for two or more of the list. A playground would be great, especially if you've got apartments. I don't think there's enough playgrounds in rentals. And a dog park, just personally.
Yeah, a dog park, for sure. We're actually going to put a dog park in, a lot smaller development, right up the street from this. That's the amenity we put in that was a dog park, because a lot of people have dogs and nowhere to walk them.
Can you help us just understand, it looks like in that apartment area, there's parking available, and you said the townhomes would be rear load. Is there any additional space for parking, or is it just hard to see on the drawing and where that would be?
I seen that, but I don't want to tell you the story, so I'm going to find that. It's, there's a notation on here.
Or if you just know how many spaces per unit you're looking at.
There's parking.
Kind of peppered throughout the project, I'm sorry.
If you look at the entrance to the apartment area, there's parking along that road there, but of course, if we twist those buildings and move them, that does go away. But there's other spots.
These, here, here.
That's right. There is some between buildings two...
If you look to the northeast part of the area, you'll see some parking. And then if you look down towards the south, what'd you call that, the south before that cul-de-sac item, you'll see a couple parking spots there that are also guest parked.
And if we needed to, to accommodate additional parking around that eyebrow, we could put some there. I mean, there's plenty of spots, because like I said, this is, if we go to a wider unit, this will change some. So, we'll have to accommodate some additional parking. I still can't find that, but I know it's on here. The parking required, there it is. So, currently, there's 212 spots, parking spots provided, and that's not accounting the garage that's on all of the townhomes.
Well, and you have additional parking is 53 spaces.
53 additional.
That's additional.
So, the 212 is a requirement. That's the minimum, but it doesn't include the garage. And then there's 53 extras.
It's like two and a half spots per unit, something like that.
And sorry if you said this already, the garage is a one- or two-car garage?
The way they're drawn currently is one.
One. So, that would still be a substantial amount of space for cars, though. Thank you.
One thing, it's hard to tell. Looks like, obviously, there's one point of access. That's a lot of cars coming and going in the mornings and evenings with the one point of access. It looks like it's just a two-lane. You guys, my feedback would be, you may want to think about doing a three-lane section exiting there, because if somebody's turning left in the morning, I drive that road every morning going to work, and if somebody might be hung up trying to get out of there left, and if people are trying to go right, might get pretty frustrating. So, if you have the room, might be thinking about doing like a three-lane cross-section going out. So, you got a left out, a right out, and one lane in, just so you don't have people backed up and frustrated in their own neighborhood trying to get out of there in the mornings, or evening rush hour, or whatever.
One other note, and we didn't put it on here. We have a 50-foot deeded access to Lake Road that's with this parcel, but I just didn't think that the thought of dumping that many more cars on Lake Road would be a wise choice. It might be a good idea for, with a gate at the end of it for fire and emergency personnel to give them access, but we did not, you guys may think it is and change our mind, but we just didn't think with Lake Road in its current state, that would be a good idea, you know, dump another 250, 300 cars a day.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. I was just thinking more to make sure, you know, just give you easier ingress and egress from the site. But I think it's not a bad idea to consider an emergency gate for a back door in case something happens at the main entrance, yeah.
No preliminary traffic study yet?
Yeah.
No. But we'll have to do one. We done one right up the street, 300 yards away, about a year ago, so it'll have to be, this will require one.
Yeah, because I can't imagine. But it looks like 96 is on a hill there, ascending. So, I don't know if we have to have a de-acceleration lane.
Visibility, we should be good, because of speed limit being what it is. Like I said, we just done one last year right up the street. Of course, the speed limit dictates the distance you have to be able to see. And this has, in my opinion, better visibility than the one up the road. So, I don't think there'd be a problem, but you never know until we get that traffic count and get with T-Dot.
Other questions, thoughts? Anything else you'd like to share tonight?
I don't think so. I think we covered it.
Okay. You plan on submitting this probably in the near future, just curious?
No, it'll be back real soon.
Okay, all right. Well, we thank you for bringing this, and that concludes our discussion for item number two this evening.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item number three, PC Resolution, PC 1424, rezoning of 7113 Hill Hughes Road. It's a 2.59 acres, map 22 parcel 71.01. Current zoning RS40, requested zoning R20. Property owner, Annette Belier. Staff, would you like to read your report, please?
Is there a motion?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Calley Williams, thank you. Appreciate that.
Should actually be a motion to approve. Half another round of motions.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Before we get there. So, I'm going to assume it's a motion to approve, and it was seconded unless it wasn't.
All right, so, make a motion to approve, but a few weeks, a few meetings ago, you said something about not making a motion to approve, to make a motion to either discuss or something else like that. Well, I thought maybe it was somebody else on. Anyway, okay. Make a motion to approve, PC 1424. Thank you, Mr. Calley, Ms. Williams. Appreciate that, Mr. Carter.
PC 1424 is a rezoning for 7113 Hill Hughes Road. Mr. Randy Chapdolane has submitted on behalf of Annette Belier, a request to rezone the entire 2.95-acre parcel located at 7113 Hill Hughes Road. The property is currently zoned RS40, single-family residential, which you can see on the map in front of you, and the parcel in question is highlighted in blue with current zoning RS40. You'll note that all of the brown parcels around it are currently zoned R20. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as Legacy Neighborhood Residential. The Legacy Neighborhood Classification notes the only appropriate land use is single-family detached residential. Legacy Neighborhood Classification lists two zone districts as appropriate zoning, and those zone districts are RS40 and R20 zones. The reason for proposed rezoning is to create a half-acre lot, which is allowed under R20 zoning. And staff recommendation, staff recommends the planning commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve the request to rezone the 2.95-acre parcel with the following condition: The rezoning request will be placed on the Thursday, June 6th Board of Commissioners meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and second reading to be held at the Thursday, July 11th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have any representatives tonight for this application? All right, sorry. Please step to the mic and then state your name and address.
I'm Annette Belier, 7113 Hill Hughes Road, and I would like to subdivide my property for future family or friend to build a home and be close to me.
Thank you.
Keith, could you go to the next slide, please?
We'll open up for any comments, discussions from the planning commission. Thoughts, comments? Okay, well, we'll call for the vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Vote passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next item on tonight's agenda, item number four, PC Resolution, PC 15-24. Final plat, AIG NEP. It's a 10.42 acres, map 18. Parcels 47.21 and 47.23. Current zoning, industrial general. Property owner is AIG NEP LLC. May I hear any motion to approve this for discussion? Make a motion to approve PC 1524.
Second.
Mr. Callie, Mr. Pape, thank you. Staff, if you will, please read your report.
This application for a final plat is a consolidation. AIG NEP has submitted to the city of Fairview to consolidate two parcels that are located next to each other. Keith, if you could go to the next slide, please. Both of these parcels are located in the industrial park out off of Highway 96, Loblawly Pine Boulevard. They are seeking an item, PC 1624, the next item on our agenda, to expand their business. And so the need to consolidate these parcels to be able to expand is their reason. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the final plat to consolidate tax map 018, parcels 47.21 and 47.23, to create one parcel that can accommodate the proposed expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have any representatives tonight for this application?
Hello, I'm Brett Wiseman with Saint Associates in 5021 Technology Drive in Huntsville, Alabama. I'm the civil engineer for the project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wiseman. We'll open this up for comments, questions, discussion from the planning commission?
Thanks for coming tonight. I got a couple questions, and I guess it might just be one. There's been, you can call it reports, or people voicing their concerns about the Triple Crown Road on the backside of that property having water runoff going over the road. So I'm just curious if there's watershed that's being looked into as this site is being developed for this building? I know it's quite a distance from where your building will be as it just comes over that line. But is that something that should be looked into since this piece is being changed? If that is an existing problem? I don't know. Is there anybody at staff that's had that issue reported to them? I don't know how far they've taken it.
That issue, as far as I'm aware, has not been reported to staff. We can look into that. I do feel that your question would probably be better addressed at their site plan. And this would just be if, to combine these parcels, since they already own both of these.
Is it more of a, are you aware of this? If so, a concern that may end up being problematic down the road? Just food for thought on that?
There, not to get too far ahead of us, I think we could speak on some of the drainage concerns with that property on the civil plan that you will see as their proposed site plan on the next item that should address some of those issues.
That was all for me.
You have other thoughts, questions? All right, thank you. Let's please call the vote.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Wiseman. You're welcome to stay if you like. Next item on the agenda, which is item number five, PC Resolution, PC 16-24, Commercial Development Plan, AIG NEP. 10.42 acres, map 18. Parcels 47.21 and 47.23. Current zoning, industrial general. Property owner, AIG NEP LLC. May I have a motion to? Make a motion to approve PC 1624. Callie Williams, thank you very much. Mr. Greer, if you will, please read the staff report.
Mr. Brett Wiseman has submitted on behalf of AIG NEP USA LLC a site plan for an expansion to the existing AIG NEP facility located at 7121 Loblawly Pine Boulevard. The expansion project proposes constructing a 31,200-square-foot addition to the existing facility. The site plan also shows all required stormwater infrastructure, parking, landscaping, and necessary water and wastewater infrastructure. The parcel is zoned industrial general, and the requested land use of warehousing is permitted land use within the industrial general zone district. No portion of the property is located within a flood hazard area. Zone X is indicated on FEMA firm panel 47187C0135F and FEMA firm panel 47187C0020F. The expansion required the acquisition of the adjacent parcel to the north, tax map 018, parcel 47.21. The final plat to consolidate is the item that we just addressed. The surrounding property and land use, the property to the west is currently vacant, while the properties to the south and east contain commercial and industrial land uses. The properties to the north contain single-family residences. All surrounding parcels except to the north are zoned industrial general. The properties to the north are zoned R20, one and two-family homes. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the AIG NEP site plan in order to construct a 31,200-square-foot addition onto the existing facility located at 7121 Loblawly Pine Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Mr. Wiseman, would you just restate your name for the record and for people listening online?
Brett Wiseman with Saint Associates.
Thank you, sir. We'll open up the discussion from the planning commission. Any comments, questions on this submission?
Can you tell us?
Go ahead.
Just a little bit about the business and what it offers?
I'll let Jason Dove, he's one of the owners, or he's the sales guy.
Jason Dove, I'm CEO of AIG USA. So we are basically what we are. We're industrial automation distributor. So all our products are made in Italy. But we actually, so we have the product here and we distribute it out to our automation distributors throughout the United States and Canada. And so we do some light manufacturing, very light. It's very, we basically kind of assemble, again, automation products. And so these are products that actually go on assembly lines that actually make stuff. So we're the components that go on assembly lines. So that's a little bit about what we do. I guess a little bit more if you want. We have about 32 employees right now. So if, as we, if all this goes well with the approval of this, we will probably be hiring about eight to 10 more people as far as within the side just for this. We do, we will have hiring more people externally, but internally, we're looking to probably another eight to 10 people or so that we'll be hiring locally here.
Mr. Pape, did you have a question?
Sorry? Yes, this is more for staff. I assume with this being a development plan that you guys have reviewed it and are comfortable that the plans meet all the design standards and that, buffers, et cetera, to any residential properties or anything like that?
Yes, just to clarify, not a development plan, site plan for commercial.
Question on, has the fire department reviewed the extended parking lot? I mean, the building is very close to the road, so I'm not certain if fire apparatus access is a concern up at the front. Just making sure that there's no issues with.
I guess, how about this?
The fire department has reviewed this. They approved as noted in their comments on IDT that were left for the applicant, where fire protection plans will be required with construction plans. What the applicant noted, they will have those ready. And then please provide automatic sprinkler plans for the fire department to review when available. The fire marshal shall be present for all fire alarm sprinkler system testing and acceptance. And the applicant noted that they will abide by that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Greer.
My other question is, I saw exterior elevations on the IDT, and it looked like, though, we have standing metal seam siding in lieu of stone, which per commercial, we're still required to have 70% brick coverage on each wall area, whether visible from a public street or not. So I'm just curious, have we looked at the design standards for?
Got the architects here, too.
Okay. Could you state your name, too, please?
Yes, Robin Hood with Crossroads Architecture in Gallatin.
Thank you, Mr. Hood.
Yeah, so we did look at that. The issue that we have was the existing front elevation of the building had already established metal siding at the top, one, probably top 20% of the building facade. The lower half was drive-it or EPHIS and brick combination. So in order to kind of carry the design all the way through on the new building, we opted to carry the same 20% of metal siding, roughly, probably a little bit less than that, but across the top of the elevation, and then do all brick for the base of that. Aesthetically, it just made more sense to do that. So we understand that we're not totally in keeping with design guidelines. But from an aesthetic standpoint, it just, it made the building look more proportional and aesthetically pleasing.
You kind of have an existing building you're expanding, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
There is a potential there perhaps for variance request if the staff had had that as part of the submission?
This is not a commercial building. It's an industrial building. And within our design review manual, we have in industrial zones, brick, stone, split face, concrete blocks of an approved color are encouraged on the front of buildings, but there is no requirement to have them. They are encouraged.
I guess it was the nomenclature of commercial development that was listed on the agenda.
It does fall within that, within our submission language. But it is an industrial building falling within this and as they are attaching to an existing building, their existing structure, trying to match that architecture.
Thank you. Well, I was going to agree and comment on that. I mean, I would support personally. It's an expansion of an existing building, so that makes sense to me. Other thoughts, questions from planning commission? All right, thank you very much. Could you please call the vote?
Staff would like to note that as a condition of approval, that will need to be added to the resolution by one of you wonderful planning commissioners, that they are requesting above-ground detention for this as well. Per the stormwater ordinance, industrial and commercial requires underground detention. And their current facility has above-ground detention. This sits at the end of a cul-de-sac, and they're seeking to have above-ground detention as well.
Given that, could we help? Could you explain where this detention will be located on the site plan? I'm going to try to pull it up on the screen here. I mean, it'd have to either be plan north, plan northwest, I would imagine.
Plan north.
This is a new detention since we've just expanded both lots, correct?
Correct.
While we're pulling it up, do you want to briefly explain the reason for requesting the variance for underground detention?
Basically, since it's already above ground now, we would like to, you know, continue that with still having above ground. We could just do the, that's a big cost, underground detention is. And that's the main reason. I got a hard copy if y'all can't pull it up. I can show them.
Keith, can you utilize ClickShare? I have it pulled up on my computer.
There we go.
Now everyone can see it. It's located right here on the northwest side of the parcel.
The drainage pattern hasn't changed, it's still leaving the site in the same place?
Is there an elevation of it on the next slide?
An elevation of the detention pond?
The above ground.
Ms. Schulist, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah. It's lovely.
Well, if I can, going back to the question Mr. McDonald posed earlier, I assume this detention pond is engineered to accept all the calculated runoff for the property?
Yep.
And the outlet flow would be?
Yeah, we have a 100-year, it passed the 100-year flood, and we have a freeboard elevations, which means it would, of course, with that freeboard, it'll hold more than the 100-year storm.
Mr. McDonald, could you point to the road you were speaking of? Is it that cul-de-sac road?
Triple Crown, yeah. It's on the backside where your mouse is, I believe. It's along that direction. I'm not sure how far back it is.
You're saying the drainage comes from that site?
I haven't personally witnessed it. It's just what I've been told. So I just wanted, be considered is all.
I can definitely consider that during the construction plan review. Thank you.
And we can look further into that, too, yeah.
If there's no other comments, questions, I believe we need to amend the initial motion to approve with the motion for, did you say it was a variance, Mr. Greer?
It would be a variance to the stormwater ordinance, which would allow the applicant to have a above-ground detention facility.
Thank you, sir. So we need an amendment to the first motion to approve or deny the variance to the stormwater ordinance. Well, whatever he said, and 1624, make a motion to approve.
I'd like to avoid the word variance because it's really not a legal variance, which has a distinct meaning, which has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight.
I agree. The term variance is what's used in our ordinance to seek that. But it should be an exception that is granted by the planning commission. Clear when we're all dead and gone, if someone wants to read this.
Again, what he said, well-stated, Mr. Patrick, Mr. Carter. So we have a motion for an exception. Do I have a second? Cali and Schilling, thank you. Call the vote on the, the exception amendment, please.
Mr. Cali?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams? Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Schulus?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passed. Now, any other additional comments, questions on the original submission for PC Resolution 1624? Okay. Thank you very much. Let's call a vote on PC Resolution 1624.
Mr. Cali?
Aye.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Schilling? Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulus?
Aye.
And Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Next item on the agenda, number six, PC Resolution, PC 1724. Final plat, Belvoir Phase 1B, 15.63 acres, map 21, parcels portion of 62 and 63. Current zoning RS40, property owner Northwest Cove LLC. May I obtain a motion to discuss or deny this?
Motion to approve.
Second. Schulus, Cali, thank you. Do we have a representative tonight for this application? If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Allison Corolla from T-Square Engineering. Our address is 111 Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin. So I come to you this evening with a request for this final plat. This is Phase 1B of the Belvoir subdivision, which you guys have previously seen. And this is just an additional 10 lots located off of the existing Dice Lampley roadway as it ties into Northwest.
Thank you. Mr. Greer, would you please read for us the staff report?
T-Squared Engineering has submitted on behalf of Northwest Cove LLC, a final plat for Phase 1B of the Belvoir development. Phase 1B contains 10 single-family residential lots, one open space, one detention pond, and all necessary stormwater and wastewater infrastructure. Phase 1B is located on portions of tax map 21, parcel 62 and 63, and is zoned RS40, single-family residential district. The total acreage for Phase 1B is 15.63 acres. No portion of the property is located within a flood hazard area as indicated on FEMA firm panel 471-871-C0135F. The final plat matches the approved construction plan for the Lampley property project, which was then later renamed Belvoir subdivision, Phase 1. The construction plans were first submitted on September 9th, 2021, and were approved on October 11th, 2021. All surrounding parcels contain single-family detached residential or agricultural land uses. The northern portion of parcel 63 contains Belvoir Phase 1A, which contains 15 single-family residential lots. The eastern portion of parcel 62 and 63 contains the area being requested for rezoning, which is another item on tonight's agenda. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the Belvoir Phase 1B final plat in order to create 10 single-family residential lots, one open space, one detention pond, and all necessary stormwater and wastewater infrastructure as resubmitted on April 22nd, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Comments, questions from the planning commission?
How many units, remind me, how many units in total will, will there be throughout all phases?
So it's hard to say without, because we're requesting a rezoning tonight, but I can tell you in Phase 1, we're at 27, 1A and 1B, we're at 27. Ultimately, we're kind of thinking somewhere around 52, somewhere in there. But again, we're coming before planning commission also tonight with a rezoning for the remainder of the partial, parcel.
With the re, if rezoning is approved, we have to come back and do, because you'll have gone over the threshold of certain number of units for meeting certain standards like improved outdoor space, things like that. Will you have to come back and get like a site plan approval for all that?
I don't believe so. And Ethan, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll just come through with a Phase 2 development plan that adheres by all the, you know, open space standards and, and everything like that.
You would have to view, I know these are called Phase 1 and Phase 2, or Phase 1A, Phase 1B, Phase 2. Phase, anything that's called Phase 1 is within Phase 1 subdivision that, that is the only thing that has been approved for this property. Phase 2, although it's called Phase 2, would be a separate subdivision. It would start out as a residential development plan and come before you in, in that regard. There, this is not a, a pud, there is no overlay on this. This is all straight zoned property. And so as that comes in, in the Phase 1 plan, there was, it only showed that there would be a future phase in there. There was no development plan submitted with the Phase 1 for Phase 2. So it would come back in as a residential development plan.
Okay, so there won't be any required open space, just recommended 10%?
There is only a recommendation currently.
I have a comment that's going to, that'll apply to this as well as a few other items on the agenda. So this plat has a few critical lots on it, lots designated as critical lots. And this is something that I've been focused on for a while and, and met with staff about two weeks ago on to discuss. And it's a concern I have that we're not applying the hillside development standards in our zoning ordinance properly. The, you know, the way I read the ordinance is we've got our hillside development standards that affect, that governs anything that is, has 15% slopes or greater. And then underneath that, there's, there's a couple of standards that you have to follow. It says any, anything 15% slopes or greater are subject to the following standards. The first of which is a site plan required. Any lots two acres or less that are created for single or two-family developments are designated critical lot, have to have a site plan per the subdivision standard. So that's one standard. And then the second standard is minimum lot size. It says within areas of steep slopes, the following minimum lot sizes provisions shall apply, and 15 to 20% is three acre minimum lots, and anything over 15, anything greater than 20% is five acre minimum lots. So I, I think we're missing the part where we're applying those minimum lot size standards. So I don't feel that this plat and any other plats where we've just been designating things as critical lots and requiring site plans are consistent with our ordinance. And, and so that's, that's a concern I have. I'll let staff speak to that because like I said, we met last week and they may have a different interpretation, but that's my interpretation and I think we've been doing it wrong. I think this goes back to previous staff making these interpretations as well, but that's the way I interpret the ordinance and, and I don't see how we can approve plats that, that don't apply those minimum lot sizes.
Go ahead.
Allison, just a really quick question.
Yeah.
What is the reason for those lots being noted as critical? Is it due to existing slopes?
It, it is, and I believe we actually received a variance request on the initial development plan when that came through.
Okay, so this was, so this is a, this is PUD zoning?
It, it's not, but it came through as a, as a development plan. And on that development plan, a condition of approval or a condition that staff requested was that we received a variance or an exception, if you will, that noted that the lots were smaller than three acres.
But I don't, and that's great if you did. I don't think the planning commission has the ability to grant a waiver to this particular part of the ordinance. This would, that would be an actual variance that would be required, in my opinion. This isn't a design standard. This is literally part of our zoning ordinance. So again, I'm, I'm open to staff's input and everything, but, and if that's on the plan, that's, that's a whole different matter. And, and that's why I was trying to figure out when to bring this up. But if I wait, waited for a brand new application that hadn't been seen before, but it, it's just something that's been bothering me. But I don't see where staff or, or the planning commission has the right to grant a variance to a part of our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I, I understand your concern.
Good evening, Nathan McVeigh with T-Square. The development plan vested this project as the staff and the PC voted on it back then. So we're only bringing this through to match the development plan as it was voted and agreed on, invested the project with these critical lots as shown. Moving forward and with the different interpretations, we could actually make that work. I, I understand how you're interpreting the three acres. I understand how you're reading it. And so moving forward is one thing, but in terms of this plat, I would ask that, you know, due to the existing vesting rights with the development plan, that, you know, this be approved the way it's shown.
I appreciate your input. I still have to make my own decision on, on whether that's appropriate, but thank you.
Legally, I think this plat is vested and has vested rights. And so I think you'd be exposing the city if you didn't honor what was, what was already approved as a development plan. Whether or not, I mean, we could argue whether or not planning commission had that power. And I'm not sure I interpret the standard the same way Mr. Pape does. I actually think it's nonsensical. The B that follows the A, I think is nonsensical, which is why rightly or wrongly, it hasn't been interpreted that way in the past. And I think it's definitely something that needs to be addressed when we, when we consider a new zoning ordinance. But I think as to this subdivision, the gentleman's correct, it's vested. And I think the vesting law is very clear in the state of Tennessee.
Just to clarify or confirm, because I have forgotten, critical lots are 20% slope or greater, is that right? 15%, 20%? 15?
And A, if you read it, mentions, well, first of all, it has three different, it has one definition where it talks about critical lots and then talks about hillside slopes and then sometimes it calls it a slopes and sometimes it calls it a hillside. So the language is inconsistent. A talks about critical lots being, it mentions two acres and that it's a critical lot, but then B talks about it, it being three acres, which is, it, it's nonsensical. The A and the B don't follow each other at all. And so I, I will agree with Mr. Pape. I think it's completely nonsensical. I, I think it's nearly impossible to to interpret in a way that makes much sense. And, and if we were talking about a pud or a pod, I don't think this provision would have anything to do with that. So I think Mr. Pape even agrees there. But this is not a, a pud or a pod, right?
Correct.
No, correct. The, the reason I asked about a pud or a pod is, that is where I do think the planning commission would have the right to grant that variance.
Sure, it's customized zoning.
Correct.
I'll, I'll also disagree that I, I don't think that you can, I don't, I don't think you'd ever, a variance should not be granted. If a request was made to BOZA, they should never grant a variance here because I don't think it can meet the standard of it being a natural condition. So I don't think that's a solution either. That's, further goes to my reason why I think it's a nonsensical provision in the code.
I, I agree about the variance part. I just want to clarify, I'm not saying it's nonsensical. I think it actually is very clear that they're two very different standards. I think, you know, it clearly says the following standards, plural, and it lists one and then another. That's, that's my interpretation. Obviously, we all can have different interpretations.
That's fine. I just think B and A, I think B contradicts A internally. That's why I say it's nonsensical. But I agree, we can, we can reach different conclusions.
Question, have you coordinated this with the post office to assume that each resident will have their own mailbox, or do we have a public common?
There is a location. If you remember when Phase 1A came through, that came with a cluster box unit.
Okay, so these will utilize that same?
Correct. It'll all be part of one HOA.
Any other comments, questions?
I just, seems like this project gets a lot of questions and I think that if it's already been done, if you're saying no to this, it's because you really don't want the project. But I think that I needed to put that on the record. It's been approved by, I mean, we got advice, it's already been voted on. If you weren't here when it was voted on, I mean, it's already voted in, so that's just what I want to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's call a vote, please.
Ms. Schulus?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? I'm sorry, Mr. Cali?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Nay.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Mr. Magner?
Aye. Motion passes six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item number seven on tonight's agenda, PC Resolution, PC 18-24, final plat, Orange Shire subdivision, 20.2 acres, map 21, parcels 63.01. Current zoning is R20, property owner, Orion Shire Investments. Mr. Greer, if you will, please read for us the staff report.
T-Square Engineering has submitted on behalf of Orion Shire Investments, a final plat for the Orion Shire subdivision. Orion Shire is a residential subdivision development consisting of 25 single-family residential lots, a new public right-of-way, stormwater detention infrastructure, one open space, and all required water and wastewater infrastructure. The proposed land use within Orion Shire is a single-family detached residential. The parcel of land is zoned R20, one and two-family residential, and contains a total of 20.20 acres. Orion Shire is located east of Northwest Highway, directly north of 7276 Northwest Highway. No portion of the property is located within a flood hazard area. All surrounding parcels contain single-family detached residential land uses. The property to the west contain Belvoir subdivision Phase 1 and the location of Candlewood Cove subdivision, which was annexed into Fairview and rezoned in 2021. The properties to the north, south, and east contain single-family residences and agricultural land uses. The property to the south is located within Williamson County and is zoned MGA1. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the Orion Shire subdivision final plat in order to create 25 single-family residential lots, a public right-of-way, stormwater infrastructure, one open space containing three detention ponds, and all required water and wastewater infrastructure as resubmitted on April 25th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have any representatives tonight?
Good evening, Allison Corolla again, T-Square Engineering. Our office is at 111 Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to discuss, review, approve PC 1824?
Motion to approve PC 1824?
McDonald Williams, thank you. All right, we'll open it up for comments, questions from the planning commission.
Just a quick comment. I, I won't repeat myself or bring the whole argument up again, but this has critical lots as well. And I just want to clarify, if I vote no for that reason, it's not because I don't want the project or simply think it's a bad project. If I personally feel like it doesn't satisfy the ordinance, then I feel like I have to vote no. So I'm just going to make that statement. Thank you.
To follow up on that, I think the same, same concern I'd have about that the project is vested and that they're, they have vesting rights and I don't think there's, I don't think that there's good cause to vote no.
Just to interrupt you real quick, there is no critical lot.
There is no critical lots on this one?
There is a note on, the very last note on the left, and obviously we can't read it. It's, it's asking for individual grading plans. And obviously, the lots that are dictated, is it, is it 16 to 20? 16 to 19? Thank you.
16 to 19. I will say, there is one critical lot. It is not due to the presence of slopes. It is due to the presence of the existing pond right there. So you'll note that on Lot 25. But Curtis is correct, the, the remainder of the lots simply require a lot grading plan to ensure that the final pad grading, if you will, is in accordance with the construction plans that were previously approved.
I appreciate that clarification because the way I saw it, there was one designated as a critical lot, but it didn't say why. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Understood. And you can see that buffer located down in the southwest portion of that lot.
Please remind me, do you, are we using like a step system with this particular development?
This is not, this is a pump station that has been approved and installed by both WADC and TDEC.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We've had a lot of conversations on utilities recently.
Yes, sir. Yes, so this pump station Yes, sir. Yes, so this pump station will actually feed into Northwest Highway and then Northwest Highway will then transition into the other pump station at Belvoir, Belvoir subdivision.
And the pump station, could you remind me of the location of that on the site plan?
It is, if you look, it is on Plan East. It is just south of that existing detention pond.
Okay. So we have maintenance access to the pump?
Correct. It is directly off of, located off of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that location was actually requested by Michael Rogers with WADC.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional comments, questions? All right, thank you. Please call the vote.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on, tonight's agenda, we have item number eight, PC Resolution, PC 19-24, Residential Development Plan, Woodwick Cove, Phase 2, 5.37 acres, map 21, parcels 56. Current zoning is R20, property owner, Candlewood Cove LLC. We will first start with, do we have a motion to, to discuss this PC resolution?
Make a motion to approve the discussion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Schulist Williams, thank you very much. Mr. Greer, would you please read the staff report?
E Squared Engineering has submitted a development plan for Phase 2 of the Woodwick Residential Development. The Woodwick, Woodwick Residential Development contains a total of 31 single-family detached residential lots within two phases. Phase 2 is zoned R20 and contains eight lots on a total of 5.37 acres. Phase 2 will also extend Breeze Wood Ridge, a public right-of-way that was created in Phase Wood, in Phase 1 of Woodwick. Breeze Wood Ridge is a two-lane local road with a 50-foot right-of-way that intersects with Woodruff Drive, another public right-of-way created in Woodwick Phase 1. The property is loc, is located on FEMA Firm Panel 4187C0020F. And no portion of Phase 2 is located within a flood hazard area. The properties located to the north and south are located within Williamson County and contain single-family residential land uses. The property to the east is Phase 1 of the Woodwick Development. The property abuts Northwest Highway to the west. However, Phase 2 does not access Northwest Highway. The property to the east is within the municipal boundaries of Fairview and is zoned R20. The properties to the north and south and west are all located within Williamson County and zoned MGA 1. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the parcel that contains Woodwick Phase 2 as new residential medium neighborhood. The new residential medium neighborhood classification notes the appropriate land uses are single-family detached residential, single-family attached residential, limited to two-family houses, mixed-use commercial or office in the town-centered district overlay, and multifamily residential in town-district overlay. The new residential medium neighborhood classification lists the RS40 and R20 with a putt overlay zone district as appropriate zoning for property within this classification. The land use, single-family detached residential, is in alignment with the Fairview Forward 2040 Comp Plan. The zoning of Woodwick Phase 2, R20, is not in alignment with the Fairview 40, Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. However, the annexation and rezoning of tax map 021 parcel 5600 was approved in 2022. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the Woodwick Phase 2 Development Plan in order to create eight single-family detached slots, extend the Breeze Wood Drive public right-of-way, create one open space that contains a single detention pond, and install all necessary stormwater and, water and wastewater infrastructure as resubmitted on April 22nd, 2024, with the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have a representative? Could you please restate your name for the record?
Good evening. Allison Corola with T Square Engineering. We are still located at 111 Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin, Tennessee.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And so tonight, I come before you, just requesting an extension effectively of Phase 1. This is an additional eight lots. We had intended on Phase 1 on incorporating this parcel, as you can see, we, we had already stubbed out Breeze Wood. And so we're just continuing that alignment on this roadway.
Just curious, could you remind me, is there a plan in the future to connect this cul-de-sac to the drive that's on the northwest corner of the map or the plan?
There is not. And I believe that was actually, that came from staff to not connect that road all the way through.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That'd be previous staff, just to clarify.
Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry. Previous discussions.
Will there be future phases?
Not as of right now. As Mr. Greer mentioned, both of the adjacent parcels are in the county and not in the city. And so as of right now, we have no intentions.
With the sewer on this one, does this connect into that same network that goes to the pump stations that you mentioned before?
It does. So interestingly, Woodwick actually has its own pump station, which is a little bit different than the initial construction plans that I believe previous staff saw. In conversations with WADC, they would like an additional pump station. And so Woodwick has its own pump station. If you can see, it's just kind of on Plan East, kind of right where that legend is. There's another pump station right there that also will receive this flow. And that'll all be gravity.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, all in this face, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So one other question, in, in the plans, there was a resource protection plan that didn't seem to protect many resources. It showed a stand of trees, but am I reading it correctly that you're pretty much grading property line to property line and those trees are gone?
Effectively. And I believe the regulations as they stand in the stormwater ordinance are that trees must remain when the slopes exceed 20%. So I believe it's more of a guidance than.
No, I know. I was just wondering if you guys looked at the grading to try to save those trees? With the cul-de-sac and everything, the trees are on essentially the south side of those lots. It just seemed like maybe you could save some of those trees and grade the lots out flat and just leave the backyards a little slope with some trees. Was that looked at at all?
Potentially. I do know that there is a drainage ditch kind of that rotates around through there, kind of loops around through the edge to get runoff to that pond. So I think that was the primary reason of eliminating those trees or grading through there. We will provide street trees in accordance with the code, of course.
What does the outflow drainage look like from the pond, the detention pond?
In terms of?
Are you, are you draining to the west there?
We are, yes, sir. Into the existing right-of-way. There is currently a small ditch that runs down there. And I believe it flows into the existing section of Woodwick.
Okay, so it crosses through the other property, but back over?
Along the right-of-way, correct.
The right-of-way, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
At no point do we discharge onto their property.
Thank you. That was, that was essentially my question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one more quick question. Does this have any critical lots on it?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Allison, real quick, what is, what is the radius connection point there, you know, at the start of Phase 2? You've got an existing road that quickly turns. So I'm just curious, what, what radius is, is proposed there?
The radius on that is 150.
Okay.
At center line.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, 200. Going the other way.
One more question, just with the road networks. So this will tie in and just, this will tie into all those internal roads. So eventually you can get an access out to Northwest Highway and back over on basically both ends, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So you can see just above the flood note at the bottom, there's a strip of pavement that's shown in Woodwick Phase 1. And that's where it drops down to tee into that intersection with Orange Shire, Belvoir, and Woodwick.
Other questions, comments from the Planning Committee? All right, thank you very much. Please call the vote.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to item number nine. PC Resolution, PC 20-24, final plat, Fairview Station, re-subdivision, 1.51 acres, map 42A, Group C, parcel four, and map 42H, Group E, parcel one. Current, current zoning is RS40. Property owner, Littlebury Development Company LLC.
Make a motion to approve PC 2024?
Second.
Kelly Pape, or is that McDonald? Kelly McDonald, thank you very much. Mr. Greer, would you please read the staff report for PC 2024?
This final plat, let's walk through it for just a second. So the part along the east side, the, the tall skinny piece, there, you can barely see the line where it falls down throughout the whole parcel. That was a 50-foot easement for sewer to be utilized by Fairview Station. They ultimately chose, when they were doing their project, to connect to their sewer access point on Highway 96 versus accessing on Cox Pike. That property was subsequently sold at the end of their development and has been now purchased a second time. And it has now been purchased along with the property that is to the west side of this plan. And they are seeking to combine those two lots into one single lot. Mr. David Parker has submitted on behalf of Littlebury Development Company LLC, a final plat entitled re-subdivision of Lot 1 of the Buttry Heights subdivision and the open space of Phase 3 for Fairview Station subdivision. The purpose of the final plat is to consolidate two lots in order to create one lot for future residential use. Tax map 42A, Group C, parcel four, is Lot 1 of the Buttry Heights subdivision and contains .77 acres. And tax map 42H, Group E, parcel one, was platted as open space in Phase 3 of Fairview Station and contains .74 acres. The single lot created by this plat contains 1.51 acres. Both lots are zoned RS40, single-family residential. No portion of the property is located within a flood hazard area. Parcel 42H, Group, map 42H, Group E, parcel one, was noted as open space on the Fairview Station plans. However, the property was not factored into the open space calculation for the development. It was to be utilized as a sewer easement for Water Authority of Dixon County. The property has been sold at least twice since being set aside as open space. The applicant has stated that they have revised the Fairview Station Phase 3 plat to remove the open space label from this parcel. All surrounding parcels contain single-family detached residential land uses. The property to the nor, properties to the north are zoned R20 putt and are located within the Fairview Station single-family residential subdivision. The properties to the south, east, and west are zoned RS40, single-family residential. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the Fairview Station re-subdivision final plat in order to create one lot for residential use as resubmitted on April 19th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have a representative for this application this evening? Okay, comments, questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Last item of new business tonight is item number 10. PC Resolution, PC 21-24, rezoning Belvoir Phase 2, 52.9 acres, map 21, parcels portion of 62 and 63. Current zoning is RS40. Requested zoning, R20, property owner, Northwest Cove LLC. May entertain a motion to approve or discuss item 2124.
I move on the approval of PC 21-24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Williams. Schilling? Mr. Greer, would you please read the staff report?
I'd love for all of you to take a look at the screen and my beautiful paint artwork here. I tried to lay it out because it gets a little confusing. I tried to give it as, as much clarity as I could. So Northwest Highway kind of wraps around this parcel. We've looked at this quite a bit in the last two or three months. To the northwest, you have Bellhaven, which is zoned RM8 pod. To the southwest, you have Williamson County Properties zoned MGA 1, which allows for one-acre lots. Kind of in the middle of the screen, but to the left, you have RS40, that is Belvoir Phase 1B. At the top, you have RS40, that's Belvoir Phase 1A. And then you have Orange Shire and Woodwick Cove that are both zoned R20 currently. The applicant is seeking R20 for Phase 2, which is the yellow section. And then to the east, you also have Williamson County properties that are, that are zoned MGA 1, which is one acre per lot within the county. And then to the south is also R20 zoned properties. Northwest Cove has submitted to the City of Fairview a request to rezone a total of 52.9 acres that contain a portion of tax map 21, parcels 62 and 63. The properties are located at 7281 Northwest Highway. The area proposed for rezoning is currently zoned RS40, single-family residential district. And the requested zone district is R21 and two family residential districts. The rezoning request is for 14.7 acre partial, portion of parcel 63 and 36.9 acre portion of parcel 62. All surrounding parcels contain residential land uses. The remaining portions of parcels 62 and 63 located to the north, east, and west are Phase 1A and 1B of the Belvoir Residential subdivision. These two phases are zoned RS40. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as new residential medium neighborhood. The new residential medium neighborhood classification notes the appropriate land uses as single-family detached residential, single-family attached residential, limited to two-family houses. The new residential medium neighborhood classification lists the RS40 and R20 with a planned unit development or a pod zone districts as appropriate zoning for property within this classification. The requested R20 zone district- zone district is not listed as an appropriate zone district within the New Residential Medium Neighborhood Classification unless it is a part of a planned unit or planned overlay development. Although the requested zone district of R twenty is not listed as an appropriate zoning, the proposed land use of single-family detached residential is listed as an appropriate land use. The primary reason for the R twenty zone district request is to permit Phase Two of the Belvoir subdivision to have smaller lots. This would allow twenty thousand square foot minimum lots and more narrow lot widths than in Phase One to increase the density of the development while maintaining the RS forty zoning in larger lots along the edges of Belvoir. The applicant provided the following reason for the proposed rezoning. The reason for the rezone is to allow for twenty thousand square foot lots, to allow for the smaller lot widths, and to allow for the desired density on the interior of the project. Staff does not recommend sending this forward with a positive recommendation for the rezoning to the Board of Commissioners. If the planning commission wishes to provide a favorable recommendation, the conditions of approval included in this resolution is the following. This rezoning request will be placed on Thursday, June sixth, Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda for consideration with the potential for the public hearing and second reading being held at the Thursday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have a representative from this application? Please state your name, address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Samuel Luthy from T-Square Engineering, one-eleven Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin, Tennessee.
Thank you. Have any comments, questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, just for clarification, just to simplify, you just want to build more homes?
Yeah, we're seeking greater density in this part of the development. And just really quick, I would like to address the lack of this zone included in the Fairview Forward Plan. It does mention the R twenty zone with a PUD overlay. We are just seeking straight zoning. We don't want any modifications of standard. The RS twenty zone is sufficient as it stands, and that's our reason for not including a request for a PUD plan or doing any of those, because we just, we don't want to change the zoning from what it's currently at. We're just going to use it as it stands.
I'll just make the comment that I agree with staff. I mean, when you look at the surrounding, obviously, both our zoning ordinance as well as the twenty forty Forward Plan talk about taking into account surrounding zoning and surrounding land uses and everything, and I just don't think it's appropriate to add more density. I think it's a perfect piece of property to continue the R forty and have that zoning continue forward. So I just don't think that it's appropriate. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, when this originally came up and we zoned it R forty, I think this panel, this board, this commission, and the Board of Commissioners were happy to have an R forty there instead of like an R eight or whatever. And now all of a sudden, it's like a Trojan horse, and you want to roll the horse in with the RS forties on the end and throw the, you know, the troops in the middle and get your way. It just doesn't sound good. And I don't think the people of the city would be happy either.
It sounds a little bit like a broken drum, but I am going to echo the last two comments as well. I think when you look at the whole vision that's coming together over there, you know, we've got high density with Bellhaven, it's got access to ninety-six. As you start to work yourself away from ninety-six, you've got Woodwick and Orange Shire that we just discussed, it kind of helps that transition into half acre. And then as you get further away, you get into the R forty, which would be the Belvoir development. To echo what Mr. Kelly had just stated too, I think this was sold to us originally when it came for annexation and rezoning, or original zoning, that they didn't request a rezone at that time. They were satisfied with the R forty because that was the plan. And yeah, now we're to this point, and all of a sudden it needs to change, and I don't see the benefit to the City of Fairview for that. And I, yeah, I just, I fail to see any desire for a higher density in that location.
Other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Call the vote, please.
Ms. Williams?
Nay.
Ms. Schilling?
Nay.
Mr. Magner?
Nay.
Ms. Schulist?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Pape?
Nay.
Item PC twenty-one twenty-four did not pass. That concludes the new business section for tonight's agenda.
One, one, one second on that. I want to make sure that we're... Was the resolution, how was the resolution worded?
Rezoning.
It was for?
It was a...
Negative?
Negative recommendation is what was just provided to the Board of Commissioners.
And the planning commission denied the rezoning request.
But was it a motion to, was it a motion to approve the?
It was.
Okay. And so, and it's a negative recommendation? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
We're covered.
Okay. Appreciate that clarification. Moving on, tonight's bonds and letters of credit.
So as you can see, lots of bonds and letters of credit. I'll just simply state the subdivisions. Not going to go through the dates, the prices, but we got One Church Home, Bowie Meadows Phase One, Brush Creek subdivision, Cedar Crest Town Homes, Elevate Gymnastics and Cheer Facility, Goodwin Farms subdivision, Pinnick Place subdivision, Willowcrest subdivision, Whispering Wind subdivision, and lastly, Bowie Meadows Phase, I'm sorry, there's one more after that. Bullet point hit for me in the yellow there. Bowie Meadows Phase One Reclamation Bond and Waffle House Reclamation Bond Release. So if you have any questions about them, feel free to ask, and I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. No questions tonight. Last section, reports for discussion, starting first with planning staff.
Thank you all for your time tonight. I'll try to keep it brief. I know that this was a long meeting, took several hours out of your, your time, and I appreciate all of you spending the time to contribute to our city and help continue to help city, help Fairview grow. I just wanted to note that on Friday morning in this chamber, we had a Builder and Developer Summit. It's about a three, two hour and forty-ish minute presentation that we gave to builders, developers, and engineers for, for all groups. It was open to the public and it was recorded. It is available on YouTube on the City of Fairview channel. To go back and watch, I implore you to please go back and watch it. It was pretty lengthy. It walks through application types, what kind of documents we require, walks through what we kind of do internally for construction documents, and then permitting, permitting options that are required, and then all the way through, you know, building permits and project closing, closeouts. I believe we had somewhere around fifty-ish, sixty-ish people that came in for that, and it was a pretty successful morning for us. So please go watch it. I think y'all would all find it pretty helpful and maybe help understand some of the processes that we go through on our internal staff side that y'all don't always see. You just get to see end products a lot of times. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. City Manager, Mr. Donery.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate all you do. I do have one announcement. iPads and iPhones have been issued to each of you. These city-issued phone numbers will be updated and put on our website. Microsoft Outlook app is installed on both of your devices. Use your current email address and password to log in. If you have any problems, please reach out to Ethan or stop by City Hall Monday, Wednesday, or Friday between nine-thirty AM and three PM for IT assistance. Please use these devices for all city-related business. This is, this is for protection of PC members as well as the city as well. When your time on the, on the planning commission ends, please return both devices along with all charges to City Hall, and we appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Engineering?
Thank you. Just want to ask for one clarification real quick. I know we had the pedestrian bridge for Chester Road Town Homes. Is there a desire to bring them back for approval, or are we okay with using the pedestrian bridge? It's just, just a very informal request.
Since you brought it up, I have a question that I wanted to follow up with on that that we didn't cover. You might address it now. Is it appropriate to ask that? It's for you.
I would say so.
How does the curb and gutter of a bridge like that work since it's not a traditional sidewalk? Like, how does, like, how does, what does that all look like?
So you're asking specifically about the curb and gutter on Chester?
With every...
Because there is none, correct?
There wouldn't be any with the addition of the sidewalks and everything that they're building. They're not going to...
Not that I'm aware of, no. It would only just be... I think, let's let Ethan speak of the requirement for having road improvements in the frontage of subdivisions. I'm sorry, not subdivisions, townhomes.
For that project, there were no street improvement requirements. However, their sidewalk would sit five feet off of the backside of the pavement. And so with that, there currently is no curb and gutter on Chester Road in their frontage.
I thought, I thought road improvements are a standard thing for developments like that.
That was, that was not included in the, in the resolution, resolution that passed for that.
When was that passed? Do you know, off the top of your head? Is that what we had, like, four months ago?
I can't remember the last thing that we passed that there wasn't improvements talked about to some degree. So I find that difficult to swallow.
That was passed on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Two months ago.
They sought an approval, approval of a variance, an exception pursuant to the City of Fairview zoning ordinance for the in lieu of payment for tree replacement. Plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting was another condition of approval. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting, and then all staff comments to be addressed prior to the pre-construction. They were not granted the exception pursuant to the City of Fairview zoning ordinance sidewalk requirement for sidewalks along Chester Road.
I think that's the one meeting in the last three years that I wasn't officially on this board for. That's why I'm not remembering it. But thank you for reading that. I, we can look into it. I didn't mean to derail this and drag the meeting out. It's just a question I have. We, I would like to go deeper into that.
And just, just to clarify, that was a master development approval. So they will be coming back to the planning commission for a development plan to be in substantial compliance of that master development plan. So I believe that discussion can be had there.
So confirm, are they putting sidewalks in? Okay, good.
And so, sorry, go ahead.
So they're, how far up is the, are the sidewalks going? And I think I know the answer to this. Are there plans to take the sidewalks further?
So, that's a great question. And I'm not going to spend too long on this. I know we all want to go home. Right. So this is the, the plan set that has no revisions to it. This is what was voted on, obviously, with conditions of approval. Now, again, they have to come back before planning commission, and there is a statement in the meeting minutes, I believe by Brandon Butler, that the sidewalk be continuous to Fairview Boulevard, I believe. So we need to reach out to Mr. Butler to figure out the clarification of what his statement was and what it meant. I know, I know. We want to go home, though, so we can, we can have that conversation after the meeting. But, so staff is looking at that. Obviously, they're working on the pedestrian bridge part. That was going to be my next question to them, to figure out, you know, what they understood it to be. Sorry. And so, that's where we stand currently.
I mean, will it go, I guess, more back up?
Property line to property line at a, at a minimum. But if there's additional requirements that was made by planning commission, it will continue past that point.
Okay. But the city is not continuing sidewalks up to, like, Kyle's Creek and Diane and all that, right?
That's correct. We would be going from their property towards Highway one hundred, not towards Kyle's Creek.
Otherwise, I think you had a favorable opinion of the bridge and whether or not it needed to be submitted. It's mostly, it sounds like, at this point, a technical submission?
Yes, yes. It would be submitted in the construction plans and approved.
Unless anybody else disagrees with that comment?
Yeah, to clarify my comment, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, as it seems like a logical solution to their situation. However, I think there's some detail surrounding that, that we should probably have a better idea of prior to, I guess, giving the green light to do that. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong there, but it feels like we're still on some shaky ground on some of it. At least I am. I would like a better understanding on some of it.
Same.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think, I think you mentioned they got to come back with their development plans. So I think at that time is when we should have that discussion, talk about the full details of the sidewalk, and then I think we'll see how the bridge ties into all that, and hopefully they can have more detailed plans at that point.
Agreed.
Any other discussion from the engineering group? That was plenty? No, thank you. Mr. Carter, City Attorney.
Just want to make sure we got Ms. Schulist on the meeting notes. I don't know if you were up there for real call. Good. Just want to make sure you're included.
Thank you.
Second to last item, Planning Commission Roundtable. I'll just start down on the end. Mr. Pape?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
Just to echo Mr. Greer's comments, I believe that I was coming back from my restroom break. Sorry for running off. Yeah, the Builder Summit, first, thank you to staff and Ethan for putting that on. I, I thought it was a right step, a good step in the right direction, starting that communication with, with that group of folks and just having that back and forth and ironing out confusion and making things run smoother should work well for the city as a whole. So I would just pass that along to encourage you all to, to take a look at that. Nothing else tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Just a thank you to the staff for all the hard work.
Schulist?
Do we have any work sessions coming up to be aware of?
We will likely have a joint work session with the Board of Commissioners prior to the Planning Commission on the June eleventh meeting. That work session would consist of our, if we can get everything together by then, our qualified finalists for our zoning ordinance RFQ. We have made a selection, and we would like for them to present to Planning Commission and the Board of Commission at the same time, so that y'all can all have a, get some face-to-face contact with them on the front end.
Super. And with getting iPads and phones, do you recommend that we delete the access to mail, email on our personal phones, things like that?
I do, because if there's ever a public records request and you've used your personal phone or your personal email, which you probably also use for work, then I think you're potentially creating a privacy problem for yourself. And so I've encouraged that the city, since I started, to take the action that we are taking and provide you with the tools that you need to do your job, which is the iPad, and then using email that's not associated with your work or other personal things, so that's not subject to, or accidentally become subject to a public records request.
Got it. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling?
Just to say thank you to everybody. And when I looked it up, there was, just looked on my phone, there were seventeen apartments for rent and ten houses for rent right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yeah, just want to say thank you for all your hard work. Really appreciate it, too.
My only comment tonight, appreciate everybody's time. I also want to say shout out, thank you to our police department and the public safety that we have in Fairview. Fantastic job. Appreciate all that you do for us every day.
job, appreciate all that you do for us every day. Call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.